thirty we call the meeting to order roll call please.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Bunty.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Here.
General.
Here. George can I get you to pray for this please.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. We just continue to pray for our servicemen and women overseas and at home. Our first responders, Father, we pray pray for their safety. We ask, Father, for special prayers now that it's so cold out that we worry about the folks that can't keep warm and and we would pray that they could find warmth or there would be somebody that can help them be warm so. We ask all these things in your son's precious name.
There you go.
Now. Let's say that. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you.
It says we need to have a closed session. In the negotiations, any other additions or deletions?
With the agenda as presented. Or.
Moved by George, supported by Steve to accept the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What was nay?
So when are we going to close session?
The end of the meeting. Any public comment? A consideration of the consent calendar.
The consent calendar or.
By George, supported by Steve to accept the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay, motion carried. Administrators report.
As far as personnel, um we just offered for the position of OCC case manager. We will be doing interviews next week for the Commission on Aging Service Specialist. Uh, today we onboarded our new animal control officer, Nathan Lean.
So I said.
Lean, L I E N.
L I E N.
Yep.
A lady, a lady, lean.
Nathan, Nathan is his first name. Yep, yep.
He's in charge.
Uh, he is. He is the animal control officer, so um we recently promoted Jamie Haas from ACO to Animal Control Director. Uh, Jamie is very excited to get her office together now that she's fully staffed. She will be coming in to see this board shortly. I know that the annual uh, animal control officer report is due. I I believe she'll present it next month. I know she's been working with me and Tom to to get it together. Um, there was an article in the Herald last week that published on Wednesday that said uh that there is a fundraiser out at animal control. Now proceeds for this will go towards the animal control expansion. I just wanted this board to know that there is no planned expansion out at animal control. We would not publish something like that without coming to this board and going to the city of Ithaca to discuss any expansion since we do rent that building from Ithaca.
What are the proceeds for?
The proceeds are for animal control operations, so for spade and neutering, um shots, dog food, cat food, things like that. So it's just a general donation. We do have a donation fund that is set up so we can track all the expenditures coming in and out. So that's what that's for. That flyer has been corrected, the advertising out at animal control and online has been corrected, so there's no expansion plan, but I am sure that Jamie at some point in time when she feels comfortable might talk to you about that. So you know that is near and dear to her heart. Tomorrow morning, uh, we are meeting with a local nonprofit called Grashit County Junk Removal. They have agreed to come and and meet our BLIT team and potentially work together with us in future projects through the BLIT program.
That'd be wonderful.
They are an up and coming nonprofit. They're trying to get a history together of working with veterans, elderly people, people that don't have the financial means to be able to clean up some of this stuff. Uh, from conversations with a gentleman uh who who runs this. He needs a year's track record behind him to show to start applying for grants. Uh, and we feel like this could be a great opportunity for our BLIT program to help give uh some of our residents some assistance or services that they might not know where else to go. Uh, so I'm very excited for that. Currently uh, this nonprofit is operating through donations and through fundraisers, and I just wanted to share that there is a fundraiser coming up shortly that uh I I plan on attending. It is on February eighth. It's from three to seven. That's a Saturday at the Ashley Community Center, and it's just a simple uh sloppy joe afternoon lunch dinner.
Are these guys connected to the same group that's gonna be picking up the trash for all of Grashit County?
No, no, this is a a nonprofit that was started by
Okay.
Uh, this family, so.
And they're from Grashit County too?
Yes, yep, I believe the Ashley area.
Oh, Ashley, okay.
Yep.
That's February the third.
February the eighth.
Oh, eighth.
Yep, from three to seven.
Right in Saturday night, right in Ashley, it's Community Center.
Okay, where's the community center there?
Uh, right.
Right there at the center of the four buildings.
Yeah, it's actually, you know, where the main four are, where like the gas station and the
Yep.
Um, the Elba Township Hall, it's kitty corner from the Elba Township Hall to the north and east.
Yep.
It's right there, yep.
Okay, I'll put that on my book.
Yeah.
It's all.
Should be a a really good, hopefully they get a good turnout. The weather cooperates. That's my biggest fear in February.
Yep, definitely. Um, and I've been hoping that uh maybe you could pass this along to your townships too, because I know a service like this to your townships would be
Well, yeah, especially like Hamilton and North Star will be close, you know what I mean? And they're both participating in things. Remember that, Tom?
Martin, you know right now.
Won't be here.
Oh, that's right. Well, I'll send something out to the to the supervisors too.
Yeah.
When we do our weekly BLIT update.
Do that, do that.
So our next meeting, uh, we should know whether or not we have been awarded an airport grant through the Department of Aeronautics, or
Unless we get something.
Aeronautics. Um, we did submit four grants for that and we should know by the end of the month, so I'm looking forward to that. The final touches for the MMR ambulance agreement are coming together. Um, I know Dave's online listening right now and he had some interactions correcting a few things in the contract. We expect to be able to bring that to you at the next meeting too. And I think there were some wins for both Grashit County and MMR and and coming together and talking about this. George, you were there at the meeting, so thank you.
It was a good conversation.
And one item to alert you for every year since I've been here, uh, one of the things in the budget book under the subsection things to watch out for that could go wrong during the fiscal year. Well, we may have possibly hold across one of those aside then inform that we are going to have a couple of juvenile placements coming up in the next couple of weeks. Juvenile placements are very expensive. They can range from four hundred to a thousand dollars a day. Um, we're looking potentially at an expense upwards of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for these two placements. We always budget for it. We usually don't have to do it, but this year it looks like it is going to happen, so I will keep you updated on that.
That's for two people, you said?
Two juveniles.
Where are they gonna go?
Uh, that's not up to me, that's up to the judge. I I try not to meddle.
There's several, like three or four places in the Michigan they could go.
Yeah, Bethany Christian Services, I think they have some places, uh Ottawa County, I think, has some.
That was a big, that was a big one, um, one down south of uh near Dundee, Michigan, and then there's one over middle Tuscula. So those are like the three we typically use the most. Yeah, there's one in Midland that is kind of like we have a bed, but that one's always full, so that's.
It is.
You said.
Well, it can range between four hundred and one thousand dollars a day to to house a juvenile and a juvenile detention.
They're gonna be there.
Uh, that 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 again is up to the rehabilit- rehabilitation process and the judge.
We've.
We're looking between four to eight months. We did budget for it.
For what?
Through four to four to eight months.
Will she have all the transportation costs? It's expensive. Actually, the sheriff's headache.
That does conclude my administrators' report.
Steve.
Mission reports. Um, on the eighth, I went to the Upper Pine River, um uh, meeting where they uh talk about the Upper Pine River. That was at the Conservation District this time. Um, we had a a good discussion there. It was supposed to last an hour and ended up being probably an hour and a half. Uh, talking about different action plans or they're applying for some grant money to try and do some of these studies to um come up with some good rock solid information. We know some of that water that comes in the county is hot, it's got E. coli, and that's the big thing is E. coli, but they want to do some studies to figure out um what are these source? E. coli is one thing, but it covers everything. What's it coming from? Is it dairy cows, pigs? Versus people, you know, we need to know these things so you can really figure out where your sources are. Uh, and then the next thing is sediment. I found out some really interesting stuff about the the Pine River and things that maybe have been were done in the past where, you know, uh plains, delta plains and stuff that were always floodlands for that river that were filled in and now there's houses and things built on that. And now all that sediment that used to go into these deltas and plains now is deposited down before the dam in the Pine River and at some of the inlets and stuff. So it's interesting to how man's actions years ago are now we're faced with these things and, you know, the one uh meeting who was that? Dave, you were there with me when they were talking about when we went to the healthy Pine River, which is a different group. They're talking about to clean the sediment out just from the dam back west. So the dam in Elm, not the one in St. Louis, was a hundred million dollars at today's rates, and they are planning on doing it today to get the sediment out of that river. And then that's not taking it away. That's actually building an island in the middle of the river because there's no way to take it to to get rid of that kind of quantity of dirt. It's it was mind blowing. I couldn't believe it when they said a hundred million dollars to do that, so. Uh, that was that was on the eighth, I'm in ninth. Um, I went, Dave went to this also. We went to North Shade. Um, they had the attorney firm of Ackerman and Ackerman out of uh is it Birmingham, Michigan?
Somewhere down there, yeah.
Um, they came in and spoke with uh landowners from North Shade Township, but it was publicized, so you had people from Clinton County, Eaton County and and many from Grashit County who were there. Uh, that's for that big ITC transmission line that they're gonna pull from the Nelson Road station and it ends up going down. I think it's Oneida Township's where it ends in that phase. Then from Oneida Township, it goes to Battle Creek. From Battle Creek, it goes down to La Grange, Indiana. So it affects many landowners. Some are just um agricultural affected, some are they run right through their residential within three hundred feet of their house. Um, it was interesting to see how it affects different different parcels of land and and it it's it's this is a really big deal. I mean, there is no real stopping it. It's a matter of making sure that the reason I wanted to be there and is to make sure that our our residents are represented and get what's a fair value to them. That's my big concern. I don't want anybody getting you know, taken advantage of, so that's why I wanted to be there. Um On the tenth, uh, Tim and I met up here at the park or at the at the courthouse at a meeting. Uh, the fourteenth, I went to Elba Township. They are, uh, they had a moment of silence. Tom Bradley had passed away, the guy who'd served fifty five years. Um, so that was kind of a big deal. And then uh they had a organization that uses their building during the train, come in and give them a uh check uh for allowing them to use their facility. So that was a nice donation for the township. We talked about the park because the next night was Parks and Recreation and they had in their original submitted application for um one of the grants, we only had three applications. There was some wording that needed to be re clarified, so Elba re clarified theirs, and I think John will be coming to us here one of these days to to authorize these three um that were selected. Um, so I went to the Parks and Rec meeting the next night. We had our first one uh at a new location. It is now back. I understand it used to be years ago held at the nine one one center. It's now back at the nine one one center. If you go out to the nine one one center for a meeting, change change in protocol, um you now have to go in through the main entrance, be buzzed in, and there's a footboard there for you to sign in with your date and time. And then when you leave, um, the same process. That way the dispatchers know who's in their building and for what reason and when they're in and out of there, so there's no surprises. Um Also, Parks and Rec or the Ashley um was approved. Just gave updates on what's going on at the parks. They're getting everything, you know, just yearly maintenance stuff for winter time maintenance, but uh other than that, I did miss some township meetings due to having to be work at the church. Um, I was heating up a building at our church, but everybody told me in January that the agendas weren't bad, so it was a good time to not be there at those.
And?
Okay, I have no report.
Okay. Do you have any uh report?
Yeah.
Please do.
Um January ninth, I went to the mental health meeting and gentleman Alan Bolker was giving a presentation. He represents uh community mental health. They call it C M H. A pet peeve of mine is all these abbreviations. But he's from Lansing. And uh I know we don't talk about partisanship, but he he talked about uh lean duck session in Lansing, that not too much was done. The last election, uh there's a hundred and ten uh state representatives. There was fifty six Democrats, fifty four Republicans. But the Republicans flipped it. And now there's fifty eight Republicans and fifty two Democrats. Uh, the Senate in Michigan, the state senators, they didn't run the last election. They run in two years. They they run four year terms. All together. And uh in the Senate, uh, there's twenty Democrats and eighteen Republicans, so it's real, real close. Irene O'Boyle, she's the head of uh the mental health thing, but she was at uh on Zoom. Maybe she's down in Florida.
Texas.
Oh, Texas. Texas, okay. Uh January fourteenth, I went to the Alma City commission meeting and Dave talked about the airport. It was actually two meetings in in one, uh they uh renewed uh their mayor mate and their vice mayor. And uh they kept the same uh meeting time. They approved that the banks that put their deposits in. They approved that the city attorney. Uh, fourteen city employees in Alma were honored for their service from five to twenty five years, so they're really proud of, you know, people staying with them. There was some water breaks in Alma, you know, this was before the cold weather. Mr. Ringel, he's on the township board of Arcata Township, but he's an engineer and he talks about the water leaks. I actually walked by one when I walked. I I said, is the ground frozen? And the guy said, you can't tell because there's so much water. Then Ally Barnes from Yo and Yo, it's the same outfit that does our work gave a good uh financial The Wolverine Pipeline uh broke, released twelve hundred gallons of petroleum in Arcata Township, and that was clear back uh December twenty seventh. They didn't know that it was uh there's so much. Uh, and uh Bob Icorn retired from the Emerson Township uh board. Bob did a lot of work for the township. Cut the grass, outdoor maintenance. He's he he's retiring. He's eighty three years old. That's a good age to retire, I think. So that's it.
I think George will retire by the time he's eighty four.
Longer.
Longer, okay, George.
Keep you in suspense. Monday, the thirteenth, the Hamilton Township, North Star Township. Hamilton Township, we had our first meeting in the new Township Hall. It's far from being finished, but you can't have it in the old one because guess what? It's gone. They took it all away. So but the heat was nice and the fans worked and yeah, it was it was a it was a good meeting. Um and then I went to North Star. Uh, the normal course of business. Um, they were talking with the um clerk and the treasurer about uh how much they owed back from the lights.
Well, I didn't want to talk to you.
Must have hit. So, uh we were, what was I talking about? Oh, on the went to North Star and they were talking about the uh taxes that had they had to pay back to uh, what's the name of it? The last company we dealt with. Constellation. They they had to settle. So there was North Star, Hamilton. And that it? Oh, Pine River. They all had to settle, so.
Did they have to pay back a lot?
Well, no, there was some last year's taxes they had to settle with. So. But they were settling on that. I took care of that. Then on Tuesday, I went to Hamilton Township. And they uh they uh brought on a new um board member. Uh, they had one that retired or didn't run run again. And I can't think of her last name, Ashley. I know I know I know her mother-in-law, but I can't remember her name.
You told you?
Ashley Gross, I think her name's.
It's Gibson?
No, she's in Seville.
Seville, okay.
Thomas, thank you. Ashley Thomas.
That's in Lafayette Township?
Yeah. No, yes, Lafayette, she lived.
Yeah, so you said Hamilton, I was like.
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
I got, I'm talking about everything here, but she's she started uh that night. Uh, there again, normal course of business. And that's basically it.
I was at the Seville in the new Township Hall and they haven't torn the old one down. And I don't know if they have enough money to do it. And I was at the Alma meeting, but Tim explained it better than I can. And I was at the airport meeting and that's all I have. Okay, uh, new business. Commission on Aging Restroom Remodel.
Well, unfortunately, Tony is under the weather today, so he asked if I would cover for this. Um, so this was on the capital projects list for this year and for next year. There's two public facing bathrooms and then there's two employee bathrooms. Uh their plan was to do two of them this fiscal year, two of them next fiscal year. Uh, we had some difficulties getting some bids for this, so Tony had to go out and recruit some bids. Uh, so the only person, the only uh company to respond is Freed Construction. They gave a good bid. It came in under budget, what we budgeted it for for this fiscal year. Um, and with this board's consideration uh Commission on Aging would like um, the board to approve this bid for this project going forward. Their mileage is a little a bit different. They they're unable to use mileage money to make do updates for their buildings. That's the way it was written. But they do have a significant donation account that they are able to fund these out of. So this will not be general funded. It won't be mileage funded, but thank you to all those people that support our Grashit County Commission on Aging so that we can do projects like this.
So moved that we approve the Grashit County Commission on Aging uh bathroom, public bathroom remodel uh for the Freed Construction Company. And this the total is sixteen thousand nine twelve?
I got seventeen one seventy.
Okay, that's the one from that's Tony's sheet that's added to this then, so you want that number? That's if you add this option I think to this one.
Okay.
Okay, I'll say.
Well, you can go up to.
Yeah, up to seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars.
Or can be you do it this second.
Well, you already did.
Yeah.
You did.
It's okay, you want to arm wrestle for it?
Well, my hearing aid. I think I worked.
Moved by Steve, supported by Jan to allow the Commission on Aging to go with the Freed Construction Company up to seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars to redo their bathrooms. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O's nay, motion carried. Mike was in there for forty years and he never has to remodel. Sheriff's Office, so get a new guy in there in two weeks.
I know. Two weeks, that's about all it took.
I'm just letting you know when you'd like me to share any of that photos and do that.
Yeah, um, yeah, actually, if you if you wanted to bring them up while I um, talk a little bit about it, but yeah, getting in there. Um, one of my biggest concerns with the sheriff's office is the condition of the rooms that the employees have access to, including but not limited to the locker rooms, break room, squad room and and our gun room. Currently, the the carpet is well past its useful lifetime. The rooms are cluttered with items that should be in storage, replaced or thrown out. The walls need painting and IT structures exposed. We spent all day Friday um cleaning out the old break room, got the squad room all nice and cleaned out as well, so. So that part of it has been uh, that part of it's been taken care of. There was a lot of stuff back on the shelving unit that should have been pitched a long, long time ago, but Chris is bringing up some pictures of of what the conditions are. Uh, this is our break room right here. And as you can see, just the the carpet is is.
Looks almost brand new.
Yeah, I know. Carpet is just nice and stained right up. Um, table and chairs is a hodgepodge of of different items that are there. This right here is coming up as the female locker room. One of the big trends that's happening over there at the sheriff's office, which is great, is we're getting a lot more females in to uh e- either in corrections or else on the road. We have two road deputies now that are female and uh the rest are, the rest are corrections officers, and so um, the female locker room needs to be updated. They, we don't have enough full sized lockers for the amount of of ladies that we currently have. And uh, this picture right here is our squad room. This, there's an interview room that's right in the back, and so they have to go through this to get to the to the interview room, and it's just it's a hodgepodge of of.
A female correction.
Pardon?
How many females?
Seven. Yeah.
How many correction officers?
Twenty.
Yeah. With your part timers, twenty.
Yeah, so, yeah, we have. Yep, so they're in the back of the jail, and then we have two that are out on the road. Yep, so it's it's a big trend. It's a big trend that's that's leaning that way and and which is which is great because unfortunately, we also have a lot of female prisoners, so it makes it a lot of female. unfortunately, we also have a lot of female prisoners, so it makes it a lot of female inmates. So it makes it a lot easier for for them to do searches and else, so, which is, which is nice, but um these conditions have a direct effect on the morale of the employees. I have employees that cannot leave to take breaks and lunches, which is like my correction staff. Uh, but at the same time, they cannot enjoy them either. Um, last week I met with Chris. He informed me we have allocated a significant amount of fund balance that was set aside to begin the process of building a new jail. It is my belief that if we were to invest some of the funds into our current jail, we could extend the useful life of it significantly. I would like to propose the following plan. Step one, improve the current working dis- conditions of the rooms mentioned above. I intend to use inmate labor to help uh as much as possible. I expect the total cost of remodel to fall under twenty-five thousand with using uh, with using that inmate labor. They can paint the walls, they can remove the carpeting and everything else. We have a a tremendous amount of talent that's back in the jail. Um, some of the murials that uh is back there is just beautiful. Some of the walls that they painted, they've done a great job on. Um, step two of the plan would be to bring in a professional firm to assess the integrity of the current building to ensure that it is worth investing in. And step three would be to bring in a professional firm to design a plan to modernize the current building. I think where it sits is is key to the courthouse, the complex, the courts. Um, it would be tough if we were to it down the road, if we were to ever build another jail anywhere else, it would be extremely tough logistically to do that. And then step four would be to implement the plan. Um, my request to you today is that you authorize me to move forward with uh step one. I know now all of you have had a chance to see the sheriff's office recently, so we attached a few photos that Chris was to uh, that brought up and uh, I appreciate your consideration.
I'll make a motion that we um allow the sheriff to move forward and give him the twenty-five thousand dollars to go in and bring that up to code.
Moved by Jan, supported by Steve, to authorize the sheriff to use up to twenty-five thousand dollars, the general fund balance to address the condition of the sheriff's offices. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oohs nay? Motion carried.
Thank you so very, very much. Look forward to working with you guys, showing you the, showing you the new offices over there and you guys will be surprised in just a couple of weeks. So thank you.
You gotta address the all the supplies that are stored in the women's locker room.
Yeah, so, so good.
If you could use a microphone, I apologize. I know that people are gonna want to hear this.
Yeah, so we we cleaned out the, cleaned out the break room, so my intentions are to take all those file cabinets, move them into where the break room is along that wall that's kind of indented. Put them all in there. And that way then, they're all out of sight, out of mind, easily accessible to everybody. This way, if you need pens, pencils, every, you're you're not going into the, to the ladies locker room to have to get that type of stuff. Um, and then getting with Stephanie, a procurement officer, and seeing if we can get some full-size lockers in there for the, for the females. Um, that way, they, a bunch of them have the half lockers and that, so.
I know.
Get them in there and yes, some nice lockers. That way they can put their boots in, their coats in, everything else and and keep them out of harm's way.
This also removed the old nine-one-one equipment too. Will we be able to work, do that? Is that?
It would be a, I I would imagine that'd be within the scope of this.
Out of your equipment room, if you can get all that out, you're gonna gain.
You get rid of all that.
Best amount of.
Yes.
Space.
Yep, it would, it would, that would be, that would be great to be able to do that as well. Work with Matt and see if we can figure out a plan on how to, how to get all that equipment out of there.
Hundred percent confident. It is, none of it is in usable state at all. It's just there.
I agree. I agree.
I think while you're.
A thousand phone lines to come out of the ceiling. That's crazy. It's crazy.
While you're working on that, I think my office can put together a a bid packet for uh, an engineering firm to come look at step two of your plan and then we can bring that back to this board when we get.
I think it's got great bones over there. I think it's got great structure and and the integrity of the building is good, but just needs to be modernized. It's gonna be good. It'll be good. It's a whole lot cheaper to build a new, a new facility, that's for sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, next step. Transition Assistant.
Yep, so this is uh, part two of a request from the prosecutor's office. As we were, uh, uh, as Sheila was hiring the attorney position that was approved, the temporary position. Uh, she noted that the description and the conversation with the board did not include a benefits package. Um, so uh, we are coming back to you. I'm coming back to you on behalf of of Laura, who's unable to make it tonight to ask if this board would consider a full benefits package for this temporary position. Uh, retroactive to uh, last week during the hiring date. I don't remember the exact hiring date, but I believe it was uh, Monday to be safe.
So do you refresh the board on what action we took and why? And what position is is actually a, a full-time temporary position with an end date?
So this, the prosecutor's office is implementing a new uh, software and server program. I believe it's called Cortana. And what this does is it is a digital filing cabinet for each of the cases that they operate up there. Uh, the software tracks what is necessary to be kept and and stored. And it also gives access to uh, defense attorneys so that they have the necessary discovery for going forward with with court cases. Uh, currently, everything is shared with and stored locally and emailed to the defense attorneys. Uh, when defense attorneys have multiple cases and and discovery is emailed to them multiple times over the span of three, four months, stuff gets lost, uh, they overlook things. And if any of that were to fall on the prosecutor's office, they could be uh, essentially sued. So this Cortana software is coming in and uh we're lucky enough to uh, hire somebody who has implemented this in another county. Um, there is a point five a halftime position up in the prosecutor's office that's been vacant for a while. When the prosecutor came in, uh, she said, if I can hire this person temporary, after this job is done, I can relinquish this halftime back to the board. So that was kind of her bargaining chip. Let me hire this person for nine months. When this is over, I won't need to hire a part-time person going forward. So historically, we have saved money by having this halftime position open. Um, and we hope in the future that we'll be able to save money too after this temporary position is done. And in the memo from the prosecutor, benefits were not mentioned, benefits were not asked for. That was an old site on our part. On the prosecutor's part, we're coming back to try to make that whole.
Well, this temporary person, and she's, or that person's already working.
That person has been here for a week, yes.
For nine months and then it, it was that person gonna take the halftime?
No, the, that position will be eliminated.
That will be eliminated.
Why give her benefits if she, or if the person's gonna be here just nine months?
And she's working full-time.
Right, that's in that sense.
Yeah, that's where you, you gotta explain to the board that it's a, actually a temporary part-time position, but in that course, she's gonna be working forty hours a week for that nine months. And at the end of the nine months, that that position goes away. She's just being hired for this particular job. But she's working forty hours a week. She's gonna be working full-time, but it's for nine months. That's why they call it temporary. So it's a, it's a full-time temporary position is what you're paying. So it's a full-time job. So it makes sense to give somebody that we have working full-time a position. We've done this. I can speak to it because we've done, we've done this, a lot of this during COVID for the health department. We hired people for a year because we had COVID money and they were full-time, so they got benefits. But at the end of that period, the money ran out and they were hired with the knowledge that they were only gonna work a year. But they got the benefits because they were working actually full-time. So the, the job ended. They understood it when they were hired that it was gonna end. But at the same time, they were working full-time all that time. You know, they were working forty hours a week. So we could extend those benefits to those people because they were working forty hours. So it's, it's in this day and age, it's a normal, uh, almost a normal course of business to to do, to do these things, so.
I hear motion.
I saw move to approve the classification of the transition assistant at grade four with full benefits for the life of this project or until the end of the fiscal year, whichever comes first.
Moved by Steve, supported by George, to approve the classification to grade four with full benefits for the life of the project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oohs nay? Motion carried. Um, consideration to go into the finance meeting.
I'm so moved to go into the finance.
I'll support that.
By Steve, supported by George, to go into the finance, Tim did it. Go into the finance meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Behind the times here, okay. All right, we'll start out with the finance report.
All right. As you know, the end of December was uh the last day that you could have uncontracted ARP funds on our books. We're able to spend all of our funds by the end of December. We have zero ARP funds left over. And our ARP fund, when you, if you see a cash balance, that cash balance is gonna be related to interest earned over the lifetime of the projects. Expenses rated, related to the Woodhill contract, related to administration. In December, we paid out fifty-seven hundred dollars to implement the new um chart of accounts, uh, and they did assist in some of our audit work. They are still working. Our total expense sat sixteen thousand dollars through them. Um, we still are leaning on them a little bit to help us get through the audit. Which I don't think I have on here, but I'll give you a quick update on the audit. Um, I believe that the audit has moved along faster than it, I have ever witnessed it move along. Typically, Yo and Yo works a full four weeks straight on our audit. And I don't even, they don't even have enough work to send a full crew out to start working their second week with us. So we'll get a skeleton crew out here tomorrow. I know they were asking for some things to get done today, which we were shoveling stuff back and forth with them and they're working on another project. They're not even working on ours because we don't have enough work for them to do, which is wonderful news. That gets us over the hump. That gets us to the point where Yo and Yo has enough time to start looking at things that they've never looked at before to help us make it to that next level, so um. Far as our MERS OPEB balance for the end of the year, we did get our MERS OPEB actuary report, which is dated September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The actuary report tells us uh, what they expect our liability to be, meaning we have currently two point four million dollars in our OPEB account. Is that the correct amount? Two point four eight million dollars in our OPEB account. So they look at that. They look at how many people we need to fund post-benefits for and uh, determine how much money we need. Their estimate for how much money we need in there dropped from one hundred and forty thousand dollars last year to twenty-three thousand dollars this year. The reason for that is because we have been paying as we go. We haven't been drawing down from our trust fund to pay for these benefits. Every year, we've absorbed those costs within our departments to help pay for that so that we'd start knocking down this liability. And while we finally knocked it down far enough to where it's at a point where we make a decision, do we pay as we go one more year? Or do we send them the check for twenty-three thousand dollars and start drawing? So I don't have a recommendation ready for you at this point. I did at one, at one time, but then I, I got the news about the but the juvenile placements and I need to reshuffle some of the.
I, I, at this current time, knowing what I know, I would and we'll, we'll, we could talk about it, but uh, I would recommend just paying the twenty-three thousand dollars and holding, holding our cards because we may have some expenses coming forward and in another account that we may have to make up.
Right, and then we can start drawing.
We're fine here. We're more than fine. We dropped our liability by four hundred thousand.
So, and that's wonderful news. It is, it's great news, um. So if anybody is interested in in looking at the, this, I I gave you a snapshot basically of of how we changed from last year to this year, but if anyone's interested in looking at more detail and is available in my office, I probably see you after this meeting, right, Dave? And come look at it page by page.
Yeah.
It's like a joke.
So without any more questions on that, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to our cash balances for the end of December. So you'll see our general fund is maintaining at uh, ten point one million dollars. Our COVID recovery fund has dropped significantly due to paying out the remainder of the contracts and spending internally down the, down on some of the projects that you approved. The balance remaining is interest earned. It uh, there is no, there are no restrictions on the interest. Um, so at a later date, we will revisit that also. Delinquent tax maintaining. Without any questions, uh, I'll give you a few moments to review some of the council payables for the month of December.
I had one. Fifteen dollars and three cents went to the Elwell Corner Store, which has been closed for at least ten years.
That would have to be restitution. So even though it is closed, if there's damage done to it, you can be charged and have to pay restitution.
Money, if someone did a bad. When they were all.
It only takes a few days to get your money back, right?
It's a good caption.
Yeah, some of those.
I have several questions to ask. Uh, first of all, this one here, CMP distributor and corporation for thirty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Pressure Sosse?
Yep, um, what that is, is the officers, I ca- I'll just refer back to when I, I worked at Ingham and we did it at Grashen years ago when I didn't work here, but it's called a purchase program where it allows our employees of the sheriff's office to purchase their own, like tactical equipment, their rifles, the cases, slings, lights, optics, that sort of stuff. The beauty of this position is we spent that money upfront, the thirty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents through payroll deduction and over the course of two years, right, Chris? So the, over the course of twenty-four months, the officers will pay that money back to us. So we had to be, do the capital outlay. We will eventually recoup all of that money back through payroll deductions, but it, it serves a couple of different purposes. Our officers now have the latest, greatest equipment. If they chose to partake in this, they have this is the stuff that's current right now.
So they have to buy their own stuff?
Not, they don't have to. You choose to. If you want, the county has rifles to provide for you, if you wanna carry one of them. A lot of guys like carrying their own. It's yours. You take care of it. You maintain it. It's not one that's been bounced around in and out of a patrol car. You know what I mean? That you don't know if somebody shot a deer with it, that, you know, they're supposed to clean it, but did it get cleaned? You know your own weapon, you take care.
You know their weapon is serviceable and ready to use.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's the key. So that's the key.
And then here's the dally. And then here's the deli.
Hell, hell.
Computers.
Computers.
Computers, okay, sorry. Thought it was a deli. Donuts. EPS.
EPS is, uh, our security company, and they have been putting up new cameras.
Oh, okay, good. And another thing, a lot of this stuff is not good for, but how many, how many people have credit cards here?
Oh, I think we have approximately fifteen.
Because there's seventeen on here.
Okay, that's probably seventeen.
Okay, and it's around twenty thousand dollars. You add it all up. So don't worry.
A thousand dollars a credit card per month? It's pretty close, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, some people use it more than often. Um, if, if you see a credit card that has a lot of use on it, a lot of times it's for a department training, you know, hotels, meals.
This time of year would be unusual because that's when they're getting all their, whatever they need following months, so.
Oh, that's true.
Unusual this time of year to have a large credit card.
It's cool. A lot of these, I kind of guessed at it. You know, I've done it before, the one with the deli. I thought, are you guys buying a lot of donuts?
Cops and donuts.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say I had a couple more here, but none of that. Like this one right here. Software, that's probably computer stuff, right?
Yep.
Solid design software solution.
And the QBE Insurance Corporation, that was, oh no, Republic Service. What is that? Republic Service for twenty-three thousand?
Trash.
That's a lot of money for trash. Oh, they did, uh, the airport tank. They removed.
The removal of the tanks, fuel tanks, yeah. Forgot about that.
Okay.
The ingrown tank out.
It shocked me too when, when they bid for it, public services.
I thought the airport that, that, um, banquet that we went to was just wonderful. It was fun to go way back in there and, and see the planes that they had redone over. That was a really nice night. Okay, that's all I have.
I do wanna apologize for not having the revenue and expense reported up. With audit being busy and the new chart of accounts I had, I would have, I have to go through and redo my entire report so that I, when I drop it in, it populates properly. We'll get it, we'll get it to you next month, I promise.
Right. Up to December investments. I see we've dropped a little.
A little bit. I mean, it's not horrible, but a little bit. But it.
Got a couple of things in front of you. You're going out ARP and money and you're
Mm-hmm.
And then interest rates are dropping just a little.
They are, yeah, but.
Not much.
Not much. They are dropping according to what the feds have, have done. So it's not.
Next six months.
It's not what it was, but it's not terrible. Yeah, in the next six months. Right, but they're all dropping pretty close at the same time, so it wouldn't do any good to move anything. Um, I don't believe.
No, I don't think so.
No, um, we are, let me see, we're, with the twenty-twenty-two forfeiture letters have went out, or the twenty-twenty-three forfeiture letters, excuse me, so our phones are quite busy. Twenty-twenty-two foreclosure hearing is next month, so that, you know, wraps that up. We're deep in audit, um, so it's, it's busy up there. And, uh, a letter or an email went out last night, I think, or maybe this morning, to a lot of the local treasurers, looking like it was from me, but it was not from me.
Ooh.
And it asked, it told them that I was recommending them to pay eight thousand sixty-five dollars for the cloud.
For the what?
Cloud. Yes and a.
Yes.
Cloud.
Oh, really?
Right.
Big ammo.
No, so I.
Fit that one out.
Barb Fandel. She, she called me this morning. She said, I got this. And I said, okay. So I immediately put an email out to all of the local treasurers saying, this is not me, you know, report it to your IT and, uh, disregard, do not. And I got an email back from four or five of them saying that they had received it. So it went out to, but it was not my email. And of course, some things were spelled wrong, so it was a scam, but if you're, if you're not paying attention, or if you're, you know, a lot of our treasurers are not, they don't do it full-time.
They're pretty clever about that.
She is, but they speed through their emails and, you know, they're trying to get work done so they can get to their other job or do whatever, so.
Well, that, that eight thousand for most ti- most townships would put a halt to everything. Whoa, wait a minute, we ain't doing.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Township thinking a bite on that one.
They aren't, but, I mean, they're in a hurry. Sometimes things happen. You just aren't.
No, I, I, I'm glad she did it.
Yep, so I put that email out and everybody, hopefully everybody saw that so that they don't, but it's, you know, they, they grabbed onto my name and, but it was tball@michigan dot, or what is it? Something officials, local officials or government officials at Gmail. I said, that is not my.
What do you mean, your email? Uh, I'm trying to get somebody to bite.
Yep, so, anyway, I wanted to let you guys know in case any of your treasurers or townships get ahold of you about that. It was not me.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions on, on any of this stuff?
Well, we're ready for, uh, taxes. Are, are there a lot of them again this month? Are this coming up?
Yeah, it's, it's about the same as it usually is, but right now, um, as far as forfeitures, we usually have four hundred right now, but then between now and March thirty-first, a lot of them get paid down and then it's, you know, the usual between ten and fifteen. So.
Only forfeitures?
Almost four hundred, but they have until March thirty-first, you know, so.
I, I paid money.
Yeah, good job, Tim. Good job.
But it was like five hundred.
Well, that's all.
And my, yeah, my little manufactured.
Yeah.
That was a high water.
Yeah, everybody's went up. It's, you know, this year was, when Keegan came and told us, you know, what the ceiling was and what was gonna happen, we knew it was coming, so.
Hey.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, thanks.
Sounds good, Steve. Alrighty. If, if any more questions, we'll move on and I'll, uh, make a motion that we suspend the, uh, finance meeting and return to the board meeting with the purpose of, of paying the bills. Support. By George, supported by Tim, to leave the finance building meeting to go into the regular meeting. Intention of paying the bills. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Anything else to come before, before we go into closed session?
Are we gonna go in man room? We can.
No, I'm not. I was asleep.
I think Tom has to be in this one.
Yep, Tom, Tom gets to be in this one. We should go in there again, Chris.
We're going there.
Matt, we won't have any decisions coming out of this closed session. If you would like to shut it down and take off for the evening.
Okay, thanks for letting me know.